...the city limits goes into the.
That's correct.
Does this have to be branded with the paper? Because they're the only paper.
My question is.
No, it's just the statute requires the ordinance to be published in a newspaper in the city. So the Glenwood paper has an office in the city, so that's where they're going to publish.
Because it's no reason to pay them.
Is this, is the expense of doing this special election, is that something we're going to allocate money to? Or is it like, do we figure out like a campaign amount or like, how does that exactly work? Is there like a lot of balances or is it expensive to run special elections?
Um, yes.
And that money's going to come from where? Water or?
That's.
That would be a case.
Some of the costs can be reversed by the law to you, so like publication costs, that can be reversed by the law to you. Election costs are not typically reversed.
So we got a motion to adopt, moving into second.
Absolutely.
Carrie Brady, secretary. Paul Dole, Jeremy Clark.
Hi.
Carrie Brady. Chris Wood.
Hi.
Alan Moore.
You did it. We have it, there will be a ballot in August for you guys to decide.
Once I fill all this out, we'll sign it.
That's right. Yeah, you can leave that alone, I won't be done anyway.
Do you need to nail sign again?
You don't have to sign this tonight, but I will mark the ordinance numbers and then everything has to sign here. So when you make sign, I'll do it.
Okay, will you want me to do those again? You should, sit down. So we're going to go over. Now you say, what are we going to take to pack it with your candy?
A copy of each of these.
So many copies, you want your copy?
No, I would like the original as well.
Yours original?
That's right. So there's four copies of each ordinance and the regulations. So I was really lucky to take them to you.
Bill, just to hang the time sign.
You gotta get it done. I don't, I mean.
You got the city seal? The city seal?
Yes.
So is this worth one, is it twenty-three or two, or is this?
Yes, and I'm marking first copy of the doc with the numbers.
Right, so. So you can use some second.
Superior, mark it.
So that was twenty-three.
That's right.
So when is all this? Twenty-one. That was the first reading, was the first reading?
Yeah, like first reading, second reading, third reading, most of them are doc. And then, yeah. Is that right?
That's right. But all the spots were. This was first reading, second reading.
That's right.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah. Because the department and the, they don't go. And then it starts. That's right. And then we.
They're wanting to mark. They got to allow you to. We got to get them all signed.
Yes, I, yeah, I have no knowledge, so I'm just getting to. I agree on. Oh, yes.
The city. This is the city. Then they quite get to, then they quite get to. First one, bro.
Yes. Yes. I will add the latest.
So these ones here that aren't going out, they go back to you. These ones that aren't going out?
What happens if not having? Oh, that's right, it's, yes, it's the way, it's just the way, so that's, this one is. That one is. It's in a. So in order to.
This is a little cooler than this one, I like it.
It's going chilly back here.
I like it when it's good.
When you have a light.
Hot blood.
Why'd you kill us?
Yeah, it was. Yeah, it was.
Well, of course, I may know here. You go. You're. We don't have to redo these three.
Yeah, it would be.
Completely restructured.
As one.
Let's see.
One question.
You have to wait.
Yeah, well, no, they were both half. How do you serve the road, Brad?
No, because they're going to go to the voters, so they don't want to be getting infected until. I want the voters to be.
I got, I got. I knew it was back in the old book. Tell me was it high, so it's only five acres. It's got five acres, but it don't.
I don't feel exactly, but I know they did really word right. So I draw this picture. Moved some flower beds.
Yes. Yep, just got. He had river, the river. And bike. Yeah, I was trying to get them to. Like this was like that is very long. Trying to be. It started. The man who did. Yeah, it's been out there, it really is. Yeah, I think it's right out there.
Hi, Jimmy. Jimmy Clark. Jimmy Dean.
It's been out there, it really is, but there's a lot of quick. Third one, he has some work.
All right, let's get back. We've got that part of the paperwork signed, we'll finish the rest of it tonight. Over the minutes over here. But let's get on with the city council meeting. We thank y'all so much.
Yeah.
And we all need to get with y'all and set up some public meetings when y'all get the. Now that we have it decided how they're going to, what they're going to present to the voter, how to present and explain to the voter what's going on.
And I'd be happy to look at any marketing materials that.
If y'all can come up with some ideas on it, it would be very nice.
I'm probably, that's probably not hard. But I'd be happy to review them.
We'll do our best.
Fasten down on his, okay, we will get some help on that, we will get some public meetings, okay. Brenda.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Would you take these custody of these? Those, I'd take the Marcus Pearl and. We got to get samples and help. We need to make sure you handle those. All right, thank y'all so much. All right, fun park grant. We're all applying for, and this is a meeting for the public tonight as well. Is that the right person? It is a grant application for a hundred thousand dollars. It's no match, if we get it, it's a hundred percent grant, the handicap accessible. We have no playground equipment at the John Benjamin Park. So this is to try to get some playground equipment at the John Benjamin Park. The city council, if we got approved on the grant, if I understand that right, we would, we would look at the equipment and figure it out. Or Andy, would we do that before, how would we do that if you could get it?
Once you're funded, we'll take a look and see what equipment is alleged along the.
So this is a hundred percent matching grant, the problem with this grant this year, we may as well not get it. Because the state redid the law on that this year, and every city under seventy-two hundred gets a plot for it. Instead of cities under twenty-five hundred, so. But it is a one hundred percent matching grant, is there any discussion on it or? Anything you'd like to say? It will be engineered by A.L. Franks and Karen Barlow is doing the paperwork on the grant. Yes, sir.
How much would there be up there, just swings and?
Whatever a hundred thousand dollars worth is, I don't have that answer because we've got to look at what, they'll give us. No need to look at that till we get approved of the grant.
You don't want too much up there.
Well, it won't be too much, because that commercial playground equipment is expensive.
And they're also going to try to make it handicap accessible as well, so that's probably going to change.
It's a lot safer up there in this park back here, yes.
Yeah, it will be, and you go get that park over right now, like there's a trail all the way around the pond. This will tie into that and it will tie into the pavilion with the handicap ramps and then it'll be built, if you go up to the park. It will be built to the right, right behind the pavilion down, that flat area kind of goes down and gets flat down there, that's where we'd look to put it.
I'm amazed that the number of people don't even know that's up there.
It's used a lot, and we have no playground equipment, we've got fishing for the kids, we have no playground equipment. And this would be the first time Glenwood supplied for a park grant?
Yes, this, in the past, when you had a fun park grant, it had to be a city that did not have any playground equipment. Then they passed, they changed the rules about nine years ago, saying if you had one in the past, you could get one again, but it had to be at least five years. Since Glenwood has never had a fun park grant, we get the points for that. Where, like I said, being up against Norman, they had a fun park grant nine years ago, well, we're going to get more points than they get. It's kind of sad in a way for a small area to be discriminated against. But in this, Ricky, we're asking what they were going to do. Um, Karen was there, Karen Browning, who's with A.L. Franks, was talking about connecting the sidewalk to the existing pavilion. Going down around, which would go around the playground equipment and attach to the walking, the sidewalk. And all that would be strictly playground equipment with the impact material, the fibers and equipment for them to play on. And we would spend the full five, the full one hundred thousand dollars.
Would it be fenced to keep children from getting in the water or anything?
I don't think you could do that, and one thing you don't want, anything somebody can hide behind. The, we looked at it, it's far enough from the road, it's right there by the pavilion, so the parents can keep a close eye on the kids.
Should they keep a close eye?
Well, they should.
And like that lady?
They don't always do that, and it's far enough from the.
Like that lady from the park said, that we don't have a fence around the pavilion.
Right, right. But that's basically would probably where the parents would be, is there.
So when we would get the results of that one?
Um, well, the application is due August the fourteenth, so they usually invite the cities to a public hearing in October. And then they announce the award. We do need our informational volunteer pickup, I mean, whether it's just volunteers that go out and pick up the trash. We need a letter documenting that with at least two people, and that way we get our points.
That's already been done, but we can do it again.
Yeah, as long as it's done by, well, we could start at January one, if it's been done in twenty twenty-three.
We actually had County Hill School one over there and put the red bark around trees, picked everything out, fixed the deck, we could probably. Go back and get the kids that were on that, we probably had fifty over there working on that, didn't we? I'm guessing.
Yeah, and then the community service hours.
The chambers, I don't know if they all was there.
Get with Miranda tomorrow because County Hill School has already, we've shut already out of pitch.
And all I need to do is get your permission and y'all have a resolution. So if you agree to it, if you pass the resolution tonight, that will give me information to put in the application.
Andy, is there anything else you see we need to do?
Not at this point. Not until you're funded.
We don't know we're going to get funded, if you don't apply for it, we're not going to get it for sure, and it is a hundred percent grant. No, if you get it, it's a hundred percent grant, that's why everybody going to be applying for it.
Could any of them use the trestle part?
Ma'am?
Does it just have?
It's just one part.
No, it's just the program.
Do we need to just make a motion in the resolution, or are you going to make a motion to accept the grant and then do the resolution, or is it two different things?
Someone needs to read the resolution and y'all pass it.
Okay, so resolution twenty-three oh three. Uh, whereas Glenwood Arkansas recognizes the need to provide public recreation facilities for its local citizens and visitors. And whereas the city of Glenwood wishes to apply for the fun park grant funds through the Arkansas Department of Parks Heritage and Tourism. To develop a public park at the following location, John Benjamin Industrial Park. Whereas the mayor and the city council understands that if the grant funds for the park development. They must provide land by lease or ownership in which to develop park facilities. And whereas Glenwood Arkansas will sign a contract agreeing to provide the necessary resources to maintain this park. And facility for the period of twenty-five years. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the city council of Glenwood Arkansas, everybody authorizes the mayor to submit. An application for the grant funding to the Arkansas Department of Parks Heritage and Tourism to develop a public park. So there's the reading. Anybody want to have a motion?
I think you will. Chief Clark makes a motion, second. Carrie Brady, seconds. You want to do a roll call on that, the county?
We'll do a roll call, just to make it official, like everything else. Jimmy Clark. Carrie Brady. Chris Wood.
Hi.
Alan Moore.
Hi.
All in favor?
I have one question, but I think I would if you wanted.
What's that?
Is he going to mess the motion up by that, ask a question?
Ask a question, I'm ready to back up.
Oh. Before I sign the contract to maintain it for twenty-five years, that's four thousand dollars a year, basically for rate of inflation. Is it, is it going to be something that we're going, I mean, are we going to be under a, in a situation that would put us, like them saying we mandate that you do, blah, blah, blah? Put us under, no, it's not.
No, they just asked that you maintain it, you keep it clean.
Right, basically just mow it and such.
Take care of it. And if you see that something's broke, you know, remove it.
Right, okay, I got you, I just want to.
Okay, so is that also maintaining the special ground? I know, I know about the special ground, so if that gets torn up or something, the city will maybe be responsible for keeping that maintained for twenty-five years?
You're talking about the impact materials?
Yes, yes.
They should, if you keep the impact materials slugged, it won't settle down so hard and rot.
Okay.
So if, when they go in and do the park and do the weed eating, if they would just get in there with a rake and kind of flush it up to keep it dry.
Okay.
It will last a lot longer, but it will have to be replaced.
And it's expensive too, so they're going to keep that in mind.
It's not, it's not really that bad.
I have a friend of mine's general contractor, when I worked for him, we installed these playgrounds, some of them places up to fifteen years, we'll send you the material, we'll put it back in because it's kids' sake.
Oh, that's good.
You said it lasted fifteen years?
Oh, yeah, he, I mean, it's all made kids' sake friendly, but it's that new environment. And as long as you just, I mean, if you have a flood, wash it out and pull it back in. But some of them, he's had some in six years, they call and say, hey, this stuff's not holding up, he called and they sent out all their spot. Because it's, you know, it's, it's park stuff.
All right. Y'all cool with that? Next on the list, uh, a bid came in on South First Street, Louisiana. Okay, the next thing on the list, we, uh, South First Street, Louisiana Avenue Water Main Replacement Project, uh, bid recommendation. On that, Andy, you want to explain that or you?
I will, I will. Uh, so you see bids on the South First Street, uh, water replacement project on May the ninth. We had one bid received, it was from G three J Excavation LLC. Their bid amount was one hundred and seventy-six thousand sixty-five dollars. Uh, our engineers estimate the project is two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so we feel like they've, uh, you got a, you got a good bid. And we have verified the references provided by G three J, in fact, we've had them on projects in the past, we've been with them. And based on that, we recommend award to G three J, uh, for the, uh, South First Street, Louisiana Avenue Water Project, four hundred and seventy-six thousand sixty-five.
And before they can be awarded, they have to be registered in Sams in the.
They are not registered.
They are not registered in Sams, but I am working with it.
Okay.
So it will probably be, he's supposed to be giving me all the information, it should be like a two-week turnaround. Before, so we can't do a, uh, we can't do a contract with him until he has the registration.
So could the, or be continued on the same document?
Yes, yes.
So then they would do a motion to.
Is that something to do with the minority contractor and all that stuff, them rules that kick in?
No, it has to do with the, uh, years ago, we all had Dunn's numbers.
Right, I was familiar with that.
Yeah, so now the Sams, it determines whether somebody's been suspended or disbarred from receiving available grant funds. And this is the American Rescue Funds and it's available.
And how much was the amount again?
One hundred and seventy-six thousand sixty-five dollars.
And this is not coming out of water, Arkansas funds, it's coming out of American Rescue Fund.
Where is that? And it comes from the local funds?
Out of, uh, donor lives in Normans. That's one reason why it's less expensive, he don't have housing and he owns his own boring machine, so he's got two pluses there, that's. I don't think this is a bad bid, him being locally, don't have lodging to pay for, and most contractors bid the boring out. He's a bigger boring contractor than anything, and this job's sixty, seventy percent bores.
A lot of these.
I mean, they might not be that much, there are a lot of boring in this job.
Are we adding two to five hundreds in this?
Taking the ones up and replacing.
There's four there, I thought there was only.
You are adding.
As I was saying, two, you only got two hundreds on First Street.
We're getting back in the plants, it's not there.
I got you, okay, so are you going to the five hundred?
No, you still won't be five hundred feet. We're not, we're not seven hundred fifty feet right now. This gets us closer to it, it gets us like the rest of the town place, First Street hasn't anything to do with it forever.
No, I'm still agreeing, I was just.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept G three J excavation with the approval of their Sams? Certification and that, what's it called?
Registration.
Registration.
I'll make that motion.
Chris made a motion, Alan seconded, all in favor? Here, roll call.
Carrie Brady. Chris Wood.
Hi.
Alan Moore.
Hi.
Okay, number eight. On the money that's left out of this fund, we've got to spend. I would like for y'all, uh, the project on the cemetery left station will run over budget. And, uh, we can spend that money there, would y'all appropriate the balance of that? That's got specifics, why's that money got to be spent, and it's already been approved. So I'm going to make a motion that y'all allow the city to pay the balance that's in that fund on the balance of that account down there.
What's that balance?
Well, probably a fifty, I'd have to get, it's probably forty to fifty thousand dollars, because Karen gets paid the administrative fee out of each one until it's closed, and I'm not for sure. Where that's down to right now. And I'm not for sure where that's down to right now. After this one seventy-six, but it was two twenty-five. So it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars.
I make that issue. Also, that person's not registered in SAMS.
All in favor?
He's not registered in SAMS. I bought him.
The contractor's not registered, is what you're saying, right?
Is the one that you're talking about on display?
Well, they approved him eventually, uh, a year ago. Okay.
Will he have to bring in a?
If we use the American Rescue Funds, they have to be registered in SAMS.
Yeah.
Yeah, you haven't paid that so far.
Well, it's totally.
I said, T.
Totally.
No, oh.
The other project.
This project was started before I got here, so I'm lost.
So he's doing this one, right?
That's right.
Okay.
I said, TJ.
You're gonna have to get him done. Or you're gonna have to get him done, cause he's already got the project started.
He won't do it. He won't do it. I've talked to him before.
No, that's what I was saying. TJ could still perform it, he would just have to pull in a prime and give him a five or ten percent out.
No.
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 Not with the grant.
The prime can sub out whatever parts.
Grants are.
If he's subbing under somebody else, it's their responsibility that he's not, and that's, there has been that happen, I know.
Right.
But as long as I'm not, I'm not approving him, no.
No, 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 he wouldn't be approved, and I'm saying, we'll have to get a prime contractor.
You can't do that now, cause he's already, you're already letting him have the.
How much total amount of money's with the, in the American Rescue? What's the total amount?
Right now? I've not told you. I, I've got too many projects to take it with the bank.
Okay. We're right at fall back in ten, fun on that. I, y'all have done that before I got here, I might have to find out, so skip that one for now.
What we're saying is he, he just won't register, that's what we're saying.
No.
We need to find out what's going on there, doesn't, I mean, if that's not true, then none of y'all approved him to do that project in there, it's gonna have to come out of, uh, out of water and survey, not out of that. But anyway, I'll get back with you on that, I don't have the answer on that, okay?
So we're in the table.
Table, I don't want the answer.
Can I ask a question? About now, we're in dire straits down there.
He's gotta finish the job.
We've gotta go do the weight.
He's gotta finish the job.
Right, more.
But anyway, well, that, may have to do something else with the rest of that money that y'all have, so I don't know, I think you might have to quit. You might have to find out that that money's gonna have to be used. So, I will get you an answer on that very quick, let me strip him the can out. That's a problem, that's not a problem, that was done even, I did that a year ago. Prove that. We'll figure it out. Okay, next, uh, Grant, I would like you to apply for, um, will be. Andy, would you explain what we're looking at?
I will. Well, this is a, uh, RDOT, uh, Transportation Alternative Program Grant, it's an eighty-twenty, uh, match up to five hundred thousand dollars on the, the grant amount, anything above that will be the city share. Uh, and this is for, if you remember, we did, probably did it ten years ago. We did, uh, the east side of Mountain View, added subsurface drains, put sidewalk in on top of it, the curtain gutter. Uh, this project will do the same thing, but on the other side of the road. Um, the benefit will be getting rid of the old ditch, putting in subsurface drains in addition to, uh, having the excess sidewalk. So, um, we, we put the, uh, I don't know. We put cost on, you have the cost in front of you, and there is a resolution. Uh, so what, what you. That's off the resolution, and there's a, another document that goes along with the application.
For those of you who've gone out Mountain View Road, Mountain View Road is very narrow, and it's a very deep ditch. And this will only do, this money, you're gonna, this project is gonna have more drains than anything we've ever done on a sidewalk project. Cause it's all, almost got some kind of drainage system in it. And hopefully we'll get Mountain View Road a lot safer. To me, we're shooting for this, get the drainage system fixed, and the sidewalk's just pressing on the top, because it's an eighty-twenty grant. And it's gonna cost a whole lot more than twenty percent to get the drainage problem fixed over there. Yes, ma'am?
Bill, uh, Mr. Mayor, would that, uh, eliminate the flooding of the assisted living home if you fix that?
Yes, we're trying to get that very much addressed. And I have talked to Andy and we're fud, I'm hoping he can fudge that. Did you fudge that wider or is that a separate order on the?
We have the cost in there to, to, to bladen the gutter, but it's not been submitted yet.
There's a fire hydrant right there where.
Gonna be raised, but there's two fire hydrants there, it'll have to be raised. What we are trying to do in this grant, and we don't know if it's all gonna be approved, is make the road three foot wider. So the curb on the, instead of a two-foot curb, you have a five-foot curb, you'll go for it. If they don't, that may have to be a line item that the city makes up their mind if they wanna make it three foot wider. We're hoping, right now, in the grant, they will approve us to make the road. You have a curb, that instead of a standard curb on a drain that's two foot, be five foot. So we'll back the sidewalk up, get the road wi, that road needs wider too.
Yes.
It is very dangerous.
Too dillys, you know, it's pretty close.
This would get the road three foot wider, if they'll approve it. If they don't, it'll be a deducted order, I'm hoping Frank, like the council, do it anyway. It's in the, in the grant application.
Which is half the width and car roughly.
Five foot, well, you're gonna gain three foot of good driving. It'll help a bunch. And we're probably, we're gonna be getting to the back of the city street, it'll go much wider than that anyway, so. It'll start at seventy and go to, uh.
Smokey Bear.
Smokey Bear. That gets all the bad stuff. Well, going further than Smokey Bear, you're out of money anyway, but that would be, the smo, the Smokey Bear is where the bad, all the way down through there is where the bad part is.
Do you know how they're, is the, how they're gonna do the mailbox?
We've gotta go fix the other ones.
I'm just scared, dude. You can calm down with that.
That's, that's the challenge, we have, you know, here is kind of the number of the inside ones.
And it has to be wheelchair accessible.
We've got to go back, we went, I looked at that the other day, somebody complained, and the city's got so much work going on right now, I haven't got it done. We're gonna have to go back and put mailbox posts and get the mailbox to where we're handicapped accessible on several of our sidewalks. People are setting their own five gallon buckets up, and they're not handicapped accessible. We're gonna have to go back and, we'll talk with them in their design when they do this next, we'll get them to put a post down, if we drop a post in. We'll probably have to put red heads and anchor, but we're gonna, the city's gonna have to go back and put some mailbox posts up and tell everybody, that's where the mailbox has gotta be. We gotta get that back handicapped accessible. That was brought to our attention, we're aware of it. We're trying to get stuff done, but we're, that's not, that's priority.
The reason I have, it looks like last time you stuck a mailbox in there, concrete around it.
Right, we're looking at a five-foot wide sidewalk, thirty-six inches is the minimum for ADA compliance. So somewhere in that other two feet is where the mailbox posts.
Okay. But we've gotta get that, we're aware, the way some people are putting their sidewalk, their mailbox is in, you'll go ahead and get that in.
That would be nine figures, a lot of whole floor down.
Okay? Yes.
Okay, so this order's gonna be Resolution twenty, uh, not, or, this Resolution's gonna be twenty-three oh four.
Bill, you got a question?
Yes.
I live on that, uh, couple goes up the assisted living, coming back to get served. They just came through and put in a brand new sewer line that's not two foot off the.
Sewer line can be on you bad, it'd be bad. It's good line, it'd be.
Sidle?
Uh?
It'd be in the sidle.
Yes. That'd be found, that brand new manhole rider range, that flushes the sidewalk.
So if they had a break in it, then it's stuck there at sidle.
Well, hopefully it's a PDC line, hopefully it'll be there in the next forty, fifty years.
Next mayor can deal with it. The next mayor can deal with that.
Everybody's got, guys, everybody's got water lines and sewer lines under streets and sidewalks. There's nobody, you can't get around that, that's part of.
Even hot springs.
If you got water and sewer and sidewalks and streets, they're gonna, they're gonna be.
I could have marked back your road here a while back, and the guy looked at it, and he said, everything's right in the middle of the road. Other than this spot, not that much.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, Resolution twenty-three oh four, Resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Glenwood, Arkansas to utilize federal aid transportation alternative program or recreation trails program funds. Whereas the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, understands federal aid transportation alternatives program or recreational trails, trails program funds are available to, at eighty percent federal participation and twenty percent local match to develop or improve Mountain View sidewalk improvements. Whereas the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, understands that federal aid funds are available for this project on a reimbursement basis requiring work to be accomplished and proof of payment prior to actual monetary retribution. And whereas this project using federal funding will be open and available for use by the general public and maintained by the applicant for the life of the project. Now, therefore, be resolved by the city council that Section One, City of Glenwood, Arkansas, will participate in accordance with the designated responsibility, including maintenance of this project. Section Two, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute all appropriate agreements and contracts necessary to expedite the construction of the above state projects. Section Three, the city council pledges its full support and hereby authorizes the Arkansas Department of Transportation to initiate action to implement this project. This resolution may remain not used often on this day.
You have a motion to accept Resolution twenty-three oh four. You have a second? Carrie Brady made the motion.
I'll second it.
Jimmy Clark seconded. All in favor?
Roll call. All in favor.
So are y'all gonna contact the people that have yards that you'll put a sidewalk on and make sure it's okay, or it's just gonna happen?
It'll be on city street, right.
It's just gonna happen, okay.
We won't be on anybody.
I know that one street, they were complaining, somebody's car was stuck in their yard, they couldn't get it back out, and getting some.
Yeah, it's third street, I know, yeah.
They got all, anyway, I want to fix it for them.
Is there a team in Mountain County that was going to have some things about, he says, uh, using the spread of the, uh, on, trying to solve the case. Put on the five hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand, that would be, you know, country's already, all part.
Y'all was right there in the bid chair. Seven hundred, the project would be seven hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred seventy-one dollars, and be five hundred thousand dollar grant. Or a city match of two thirty-five, six eighty-one, twenty-five.
Oh, that's good, okay. So get it, how much bill?
Two hundred thirty-five or so, they're saving up for it.
And then, uh, that RDOT infrastructure would be two, two forty. And this project if approved, it'd be two to three years out. This is not, this is not a project that's gonna be done next year, council. This is probably a three-year-out project, realistically. Okay, next on the list, uh, we're through with the paving, and we've talked about while the paper was here, doing a little more paving. Uh, I need y'all to approve the bid, I mean, uh, price of a hundred fifty-five thousand, one sixty-seven, fifty-five.
That's all that extra we talked about.
That's all the extra you talked about, yes. Yes.
Yeah, this has been discussed, looked at.
Is, all of you looked at it, yeah, was this?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next grant, there is a, uh, application for a three hundred thousand dollars, up to three hundred thousand dollars, at seventy-five, twenty-five matching. We're working on one of those projects right now on Seventy Bridge in the culverts out on, uh, uh, Rock Creek Road. That's, that was a seventy-five, twenty-five grant project, and that money is available for a grant slot again this year. We have started taking pictures, have not got complete, and Karen is not ready for application. I'm just showing you what's doing. Uh, looking at the culverts that need replacing. This is a seventy-five, twenty-five grant for a covert replacement in the city limits. I do not have all of that, but we gotta get Karen House's application, we gotta hurry and get it in.
And we need to have a notice of intent submitted by May the thirty-first with, and we can submit up to three different projects. We need to put priority of project one, two, and three. So if there is enough of money out there, we might have more than one project funded. But it will do replacing low-water, uh, crossings and existing bridges with elevated bridge, critical fence struc, infrastructure retrofits to reduce natural hazard risk, construction of retention and detention basins, uh, generators for critical facilities, bank stabilization, install or upsizing culverts, other activities that reduce the risk of natural hazards within the jurisdiction.
We are not complete on this, but if y'all wanna apply for it, we got to get to working on it and get it applied for. This is just some of the stuff that we found out about, I found out about this yesterday, so. It's, it's quick, but you've got a deadline of May the first. So if y'all wanna apply for it, we'll get, fill, paperwork filled out to do it, and it'll be covert replacement would be the, the bad culverts that need replacing. And I don't even know where they all are in the city, that's something Karen and Brett will have to work on, uh, to get covered.
So there's more than just this right here, this.
Oh, this, he worked on this today, this is it. He's worked on.
And this is a co-op grant.
This is seventy-five, twenty-five grant.
Yes, and the way it's been in the past, the city could always use the in-kind labor as the twenty-five percent. And Judge Howard said he heard the same thing in the last workshop. I have a phone call in to verify that fact with, uh, Arkansas Division of Emergency Management.
Okay, so we're, and we, this one thing, we don't have to have an engineer to start bridge work, right?
If you did the bridges, you would.
If we didn't have bridges, we wouldn't.
You have a culvert, so the generator, you wouldn't have to. But if you were to replace the low-water crossings and existing bridges with an elevated bridge, you definitely would need an engineer to do it.
We're not gonna do that, but, hell, if they vote to do this, when do we have to get the, all the paperwork in for you to get filed?
I need to, I need to submit that notice of intent by May the thirty-first.
So what do you need from us?
Next week.
I need your approval of, so we had, in this, we're working a motion to apply for this.
Can I make a motion to?
Motion made, Carrie Brady, seconded by Alan Moore. All in favor? All right. The next thing in y'all's package is quite a few emails and quite a few, uh, everything concerning. What people have got on Facebook is accused the city of Glenwood of having pumping sewer into the river. And health department issued warnings on the river with nothing confirmed. As of today, you have your first test back, and to those of you who have this packet, we'll go over it. And I'm kind of upset that everybody puts on Facebook and thinks they know what's going on, but they don't have a clue. It would be nice if people would ask before we destroy the business of the river. But we took eight samples, we will take samples in the morning. If anybody don't think we're doing samples correctly, at seven o'clock in the morning at City Hall, you can go with us while we take the samples. We will do PH and DO, the city crews will do that. We will get the samples boxed up, and I will escort them unless y'all will ride with me. You can escort me to, uh, Arkansas Analytics, we'll do the lab testing and give that to the, our city engineer and give it to the State Health Department and ADQ.
So that means the, the stuff you put in there sealed the leaks and.
We did not have a leak, that was preventative. They accused us of having a sewer leak. There is some water in all those, uh, swamp areas in there, we don't know where it's coming from. So our engineers said it's a preventative thing, you get tests back, we put twenty-four thousand pounds of bit in that against the levee. There's been, we put dye in it before you ever put that in there. you ever put that in there, there's no dye, there's no color of water come out, blue or red, we put blue in it first, we put red in it second. Health department, ADQ's been aware of all this. Now, I will agree that the lady down there, there was a bad stink, and I don't know what that is, we haven't gotten the bottom of that issue, but it's not, we're gonna look at all the tests we made, and I'll show you the results, and we'll look at it, and the river's safe to be in, people.
Are you talking about the pond, are you...
I'm talking about the pond, I'm talking about Tressel Park. I'll go through Tressel Park and where you're accusing us of tearing a water line, a sewer line out, it ain't happening. No sewer line been touched down there. We filled up the picture she put on that says an antique cemetery, that's the concrete barriers around where the city's lift station used to be that bumped in that pond back in the sixties and seventies.
You had your equipment damaged with that, you know...
The equipment was down there tearing down trees that were dead trees, and we cleaned up, I'll put pictures of that up for everybody to see. We're trying to make, you know, the cemetery has told the people they can't park down there anymore, so the, the city has land where that's at, we did cut some dead trees, we cut a couple of live trees, most of them were dead. Eighty percent of what you took out was dead, right?
Yes.
You took out two to three live trees?
Uh, two, two live trees and about four dead.
Okay, and that's why the park was closed. It was not closed because of a sewer leak, but I couldn't answer anything on Facebook about you. So all you Facebook posters that want to, you need to take this right here and post on Facebook so everybody knows the truth.
Didn't you tell me though that that, where that water was running in there, it's coming out...
I told you I didn't know, there's iron and manganese in there that's making that red, we know. I don't know what that is.
I don't mean this spot over here, I'm talking about where it was rushing down into the river, you know, coming under the trestle.
That coming under the trestle, that one spot is where those pictures that the lady put on are red, that stink, and I agree, it stinks. And I didn't, the city was not gonna make an opinion, we weren't gonna get on Facebook and do like the people that judge without knowing what they're doing until I got the facts, that we did samples because everybody wants samples done the day it was raining. That was the first day we could get samples done, 'cause you got, third time, you gotta get these samples to the, to the guy up there. And by the time we got everything lined up that day and looked at everything, it was too late to get samples up there, so it took them after they rained. If you want the samples of when it was raining, the total river was thirteen thousand, three hundred parts of coal out. That's the whole river, all the way. So nothing in the river was safe to be swimming in while it was raining, okay? These results are from the waterways that are running as of yesterday. Well, we hadn't got floodwater everywhere, and we hadn't got, you know, cows in the pasture and chicken litter, it's a coal out. When it rains, it gets into your water system, it gets into the river, it's always gonna be, unless we get rid of cows, human beings, and everybody else. But anyway, let's go over, and I'll show you the eight sample points we're taking with eight, we're doing this under direction of ADQ and the health department. They have a list of this recorded on Google Earth, and they know exactly the locations we're taking the samples from. If any of you wanna go with us, put you some boots on in the morning, you better get ready for fryers and ticks, 'cause it ain't fun getting these, but you're welcome to go, leaving at seven. But, the first number eight sample point, which because the first day we had other samples that we continue to do, the number one sample point, or number eight, is the high water bridge, has nothing to do with anything downstream, correct? Does everybody agree with that? High water bridge is out from all of that. A hundred and seventy-two parts per million. According to health department, they want the river to be under a hundred and twenty-five, or safe, safety in the water, okay? You go on down the river, everybody knows where the gravel bar is down there before you get to the trestle, the big gravel, know where the big gravel bar is, the river turns? That was the forty-eighth, right? Uh, forty-eighth, see the forty-eighth down, sample number two? That's, you know where the big gravel bar is before the trestle down there, back on upriver?
Upriver.
Your, your parts per million there is forty-eight. One of the reasons why you're seeing these differences in the river of coal out, you, the water is not moving as much up there at the high water bridge as it is in that curve. So your coal out's completely less 'cause you got faster moving water, right? Eighty, kinda? The next sample down, the one where she smelt the smell, is four eighty-eight, that's high. But the next sample down, y'all know where the concrete ramp is there that everybody goes swimming at? It's ninety-three. Anything under a hundred and twenty-five, health department considers no danger, period. So swimming hole right there that everybody said was nothing wrongs they're into is ninety-three. Glenwood has never released any raw sewer. There could be seepage out of that pond, and all of this controversy's gonna cost the city somewhere between a half a million and a million dollars to put a liner in that pond, but just be thankful we got Facebook so we get the health department involved in it, and when we come to you to spend a half million, a million dollars to put a liner in that pond, just be thankful of what Facebook does for you when you don't know what you're talking about. And I'm upset!
So did you get the sewer plant working, the clarifier is working again and all that?
We've got one clarifier still down, it's being replaced. We got two lift stations, two pumps being put in lift stations in there.
Billy, you told us down there at the river that it's the seepage under the ground...
We told you that it could be, and that's the reason the city wasn't gonna say anything till we got tests back.
Okay, absolutely.
There's no leakage there.
I just wanted to clarify that because you didn't say that.
I told you we didn't know.
Yeah, you said it, it was probably...
I have a question, where did, where did KARK get their information because they...
'Cause somebody calls the health department around here that likes to be calling and says, "I know what's going on."
I mean, that's where I, I mean, that's where I get my news. I mean, I don't...
Any answer how they could, I don't know how they can do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I get my news, it's the news, and that's, and it's said, it's not safe.
It's all fake, it's not real. All you gotta do is call them, tell them something, and they'll put it on there, it's all...
But sample five reading going on with this is back up that little tributary that goes back on the side by the railroad track and the pond, before you get, that reading is seventy-four in that water.
It's way below, it's way below.
Okay, you go on up and where we thought there might be a leakage, uh, well, the first one is fifty-six, way on down there by, coming up about five hundred feet up from the sample right there at the trestle, is fifty-six. The seventy-four reading is where the pipe was that we thought there was water running out of those old, uh, sloughs in there, and we thought that might be, that's a seventy-four. Now, the, the one that's concerning, and we have no idea what's going on, up behind the depot is completely out of anything to do with the city pond or the city pump station or anything down there, we've got an eight sixty-six. I don't know whose that is, that could be a city sewer line leaking back up the street up, I don't know what it is. It could be somebody's septic tank running in there. Well, that, that's true, we know it, we, okay, we're gonna get some more tests done, but we destroyed, we probably cost the city, this, this little conversation on Facebook called health department, be happy you've caused the city somewhere between a half a million and a million bucks, because you will put a line in the pond, get it diffused.
On Saturday, Billy, you know, with the story of that, where the woman reportedly was working...
That's right, and the, the thing that's going on right there, the two, the two samples that we took out are on the water side closest to the pond, and there's another, there's two little tributaries running down through there, and that bigger, that four forty-four sample comes back upstream, back, back upstream, and then it would get in the full creek side of the creek down through there. It's possible something all the way up there, there's something going on up behind, but when you get to the river, no matter what, you're a ninety-three. Okay? Somebody saying you can't float in the river, health department said anything, there's a lot of rivers more than a hundred and twenty-five, but health's putting a hundred and twenty-five up there. One twenty-five is what the health department wants us to be under, and you're at, uh, ninety-three where everybody's swimming down there.
I gave my, back to Jimmy, what, what was the part that's coming like down behind the depot and all of that?
That is the worst, that is the bad reading.
Sixty-six.
That's the one that's coming down through town?
Coming from town, eight sixty-six. But that's not, you're not ever getting that level.
Well, yeah, I know.
And I'm not saying that this doesn't need to be investigated, but this mayor ain't not having anything to do with the city, I don't have it, it, we could have a city sewer main cracked up there somewhere, we could have some basic septic tank system leaking in up there.
What was the sample seven, it was six hundred and two?
That is the pond itself.
Okay. Being a tall sewer...
Tall sewer pond, and we are taking about four inches a day of that pond down and taking it to the sewer plant right now. We're, we're in the process, ADQ wants pot totally drained, we're gonna drain it?
Excellent.
Well, okay, that's great, that's great news, let's drain it. And don't complain at me when it comes a, a five-inch rain, and we got two million gallons of water to go, and it's gonna go through the sewer plant, the sewer plant's washing out and we're gonna put it out, we hold it there and we're not washing it out at the sewer plant. If you notice your tests for the last five years have been coming back good, because we put all that excess water in the pond and we take it back to the sewer plant and we can handle it. If that pond is shut down and we can't handle it and all that hits the sewer plant, that sewer plant can't handle two million gallons of water a day, it's gonna wash it out, it's, everything's going into the river.
That's right.
So you gotta, you gotta say what, you gotta figure out which way you wanna work this, you'd rather have something in the sewer pond, or you'd rather wash the sewer plant out. You got two options, not one single, if you don't have that pond working, the reason it was put back online is to do exactly what its function is. And we put sewer in there, some because of this work that shouldn't have been in there, that was this daily water, not floodwater, we didn't, but that's not what's leaking out. That's something, we gotta get that pump station on, put back in and fix, and that should never happen again, but that didn't get out into the river, okay?
Where it come from?
You tell me, eight sixty-six, if you can go find it, the city of Glenwood don't know we're, we're searching, but if you can go find where it is and tell me who it is behind the depot on up, let's find it.
It's up against the tracks the sewer pond is, and there couldn't be anything going on that side of it, so it has to be coming out from under the ground.
It's not, the, the eight sixty-six level is behind the depot. There's no way anything from that sewer pond can go back upstream, it won't go there. It ain't happening. So...
Is it, is it above the sewer pond like where it's, like the upper end of the sewer pond?
The leak, the eight sixty-six, you know where the old depot is at, beside the gym? You know where the big covert is behind the, behind the gym in the depot?
The railroad track.
The caboose in the depot. That eight sixty-six sample is pulled right at that covert.
So they're coming here all the way up there?
It's coming from the tank.
Before you can get in here, what you're looking at, we all didn't get one, and I know he's gotta have his back and all that, so could we have some for our confidence?
We'll make all of you one.
Thank you, Billy. I'm glad you saw me.
Alan, I don't, all the rest of this correspondence canceled, I didn't make a fact of that for everybody. That's all my correspondence in the last three days with ADQ, the health department, and our engineer, and analytics, Arkansas analytics, that's all the, that's all the documentation that goes with that. And as of five o'clock this afternoon, there's one sheet that was laying there that wasn't there, that was the answer that went back to the health department, or went back to ADQ at five o'clock this afternoon, or five-thirty, whenever, I got it at five, uh, whenever it was, five-thirty, I think, is when Al Frank did the answer to ADQ for us on the samples that come back today, and told them our plans for tomorrow. So we are diligently working on this, the river is safe to be in right now, and I'm, I'm quite sure that we won't get the nice response from everybody from Glenwood that loves Glenwood so much, that's run us down, I'm quite sure our Facebook post will not be positive so we can get canoe business back to Glenwood with rather tearing the town down, and I'm quite sure KARTV won't retract their stake.
Billy, my grandson, he's in canoes in that river every day, and I want it to be safe for him, and I haven't put anything on Facebook, so don't yell at me.
I'm not, I'm yelling where the, where the shoe pitch was.
But, Donna, Donna, I do not have sewer in my yard, that's a spring, so you can put a line to my friends, because they send me the tests.
You're a good, you're a, you're talking about a son, I wanna say.
Okay, back to the meeting, back to the...